All right, I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is, it is 5:30 officially. And this is the work session for the City of Minutrista of July 17th, 2023. Going to start out real quick with some introductions. I'm Lisa Wayland, I'm the mayor. To my left are council members Kathleen Refkin, Ann McGregor, Peter Vickery, and Claudia Lacy. And then on the end, we have our city engineer, Allison Falsky. Hi Allison, I haven't said hi. Gary Peters is our Director of Public Works. And then Ally Paul Fuss, our Director of Administration. And then we have Don Matzko, who's our City Clerk. And to my left, we have Jasper Krugel, our City Administrator, and Brian Grimm, our Finance Director. With that, we have two items on our agenda. We have the Turtle Creek Tree Discussion, and then we have the Reconstruction Project Tree Discussion as well after that. And then we will be adjourned. Again, typically, we don't take comments from the audience. If we have specific questions or need more information, I will direct those to Amanda. With that, Megan, thank you. As they know, I'm terrible with names. So we will direct the, Mr. Krugel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Jasper, go ahead.
So what I'm going to do is, I think all of the City Council members received the email from Megan. How do you, Groot, is it? Groot, Megan Groot? Back in, on June 5th, kind of giving a synopsis of what's going on out there in Turtle Creek. In general, there's some work, you know, we have a construction project going on out there. Some of the trees that are in the islands and boulevards are in not the best condition. I believe the HOA, the Turtle Creek HOA requested that the city replace those trees. There's been some discussion with the Public Works Director about just the area that these trees are in, not necessarily being ideal to grow trees. And that's kind of some of the reasons why they're not doing well. And there was basically direction to bring this to a City Council work session where the HOA can interact potentially directly with the City Council to try to find a solution to some of these trees. One of the things that this area doesn't have is a maintenance agreement between the HOA and the city. There are things such as irrigation that are in the island that the HOA pays for. So there's obviously a little bit of the HOA doing things in the right of way that normally, under new development agreements, we would have a maintenance agreement saying, you know, you're going to do this, and the city's going to do that. That doesn't exist in this case. So that's kind of why we're here today, because some of these basic things aren't defined, and we have the requests from the HOA. So I think, right now, if that's the general synopsis, I think if there's anything else that I missed, please let me know. But we're really trying to figure out, what are we going to do moving forward? Are we going to replace the trees? I think Public Works Director Peters indicated that, you know, the partnership could potentially be that we're going to cut down the trees, and the HOA removes the stumps, and then we just won't have trees there, because the islands are not ideal to grow trees, just because of the rocky nature of the soils and things like that. And then that's kind of where we're at right now, with a little back and forth between the HOA and the city. So with that, I'll entertain questions. If Public Works Director Peters wants to indicate anything that I missed with the synopsis. But generally, you know, we don't feel that the trees can grow well in that area right now and sustain, be sustainable for the near future. So that's kind of why we're at where we're at right now, with the current soil conditions.
Well, that begs the question, then, why not do soil correction?
How much soil correction are you willing to do? The only issue that you're going to have is that whole road is based. So what they do is, they come in, they did that whole development, like anything else, they come through, they pull out everything, they put all the base down, all the rock down, they put the center island over it, and they put about this much black dirt in there. To do a tree, you're going to need, you know, six to eight feet around it at least, not probably 10, plus a good, you know, 6 to 8 feet deep. And we don't have that in those center islands, that's the issue. What happens is, when they plant those trees, one reason that they're up so high is they try to get more black dirt in there. But the tree roots will go out, they'll hit that concrete or the rock, and they're going to turn right on south, and they're going to, you know, just start girdling. And that's what's happening out there. Same thing's happening in Hunter's Crest, the same thing's going to happen in Woodland Cove. It's happening in, with their other linden trees that are in between the curb line and the sidewalk. There's not enough room for those trees to maintain a good, stable root system. So you can plant trees there again, but in the 10 to 20 years, you're going to have that same issue, no matter what you plant in there, you're going to have that same issue again, where the tree roots are just going to run out of room and just start choking themselves off. I mean, that's, that's the issue that you have. It's tough to get trees to grow in a center island, you know, like that.
Are there certain trees that are better than others?
You know, if you're going to, if you are going to plant something, it'd be more of a pyramidal style. You know, your Century Ginkgo, Green Spire Lindens, which they have a ton of them already in there. That's what's basically lining the whole north side of the road. There's a couple maples that are out there that are kind of more pyramidal, really tight based, an Armstrong Gold, I think, is one. There's some birch, aspen, you know, something that's going to be more compact in growth. But the whole issue comes down, it's still going to have all that root structure. So the other issue that you have with the maples is, a lot of these new ones are hybrid with silver maples, so they graft them together. And silver maples don't have a deep root structure, if you notice. I mean, they'll stay more towards the top. And so instead of going down, they're going to spread out, and they're going to hit the curb faster. So, I mean, there's just a lot of issues. I mean, I never have been a fan of any boulevard trees too close to curbs, in between the sidewalk and curbs. History looks back, if you look at downtown Chaska, downtown Carver's, your old, where they have these trees where the curbs are all heaved, the sidewalks are heaved, the road is heaved. They were just, I mean, it's just not designed for that area. You're much better off giving the homeowner the tree in their front yard, and saying, here, have a free tree where it's plenty of room to grow, and it'll live for 50 to 60, 70, 500 years. You know, you're just going to run out of room, that's, you know, that's just not my opinion, that's, I'm going to tell you, that's a fact.
Okay.
Be better off, if you're going to do anything, than do shrubs.
Who put the trees in in the first place?
I would assume the developer did. I mean, the city never would have done that on their own. I'm assuming somewhere, when they did the planning of it, you know, the developer did that. Because if you look back, I mean, there's irrigation sleeves put in and all that, the city never would have done that on their dime. Why would we? You know, I mean, the developer would have done that, because, I mean, they want to screw something up, make it look nice as they're selling the homes. But they're all over. I mean, we call them the California cul-de-sacs. You have them up in Sunnybrook, you have them up there, you know, where they, you know, the center island's taken over, and they put all these plantings in and stuff. Hey, they look great. Maintenance nightmare for us in winter. I mean, you know, for us in winter, I mean, even a center island in the middle of a road is just, it's a maintenance nightmare for us. You know, I mean, curbs get banged up, we wreck plows and stuff like that, but, you know, but I would have ventured to guess, back in the day, the developer did it, and, you know, with the blessing of, you know, the city said, yeah, go ahead and do it. So now, like you say, there's maintenance agreements with everything that they do it. But back then, I'm sure it was a hearty handshake, and a yep, go for it. And that's what it was, a lot of them.
So a couple questions, and it might have to be directed to Megan. One, if you're asking the city to replace the trees, so, and I think unless we do the soil correction, there's probably, and/or change trees, type of trees, that it's not, it's not going to work. So, but the other question I have is, would you be willing to take over the maintenance and have an agreement, as do most other HOAs? See, most other HOAs now, they're, they're charged with maintaining their boulevards, and they're, those type of trees, I know Woodland Cove and many others in the community have that, have that agreement, so it's their responsibility. So that would be a thing, if the city were to put any dollars into this, I think we'd have to then have an agreement in place that says, moving forward, then it's their responsibility. The other thing is, I don't want to just leave this like this, because it doesn't look good, and this is our city, whether it's this neighborhood or any neighborhood. I think we, we have a responsibility to make it look nice. So even if, if we remove the trees, and then if we were to give them some money from our tree fund, and then they can then landscape that, those areas.
I was going to say, it doesn't have to be trees, it could be saws or.
They can landscape, they can landscape it, and again.
Something that'll grow there.
Right. And, and I know Lynn is, is a landscaper, they, they can landscape it, whatever they want to do, and then, moving forward, it's their responsibility. You know, so, but I do think, I mean, this, these are quotes unquotes, because there is no agreement in place, our boulevards and our trees. So it would do two things that would kind of get it off our plate, one, in the future, and two, it would put then the future, how do you say, issues in their hands, and hopefully make Gary happy, and, and then also make our residents happy. And you know, they always say, happy wife, happy life. Happy residents, happy life for the council. So that's kind of what I'm thinking we could do.
And Madam Mayor, if I may, they have been taking care of the islands for, since the development went in. I mean, that's not the issue, I don't think, at all with them. They, they have, they have been doing it for, since I've been here, and I'm assuming since the development went in. They take care of the irrigation, they take care of everything. That's not the issue. The issue is going to be what, you know, is just basically the tree thing. The other thing I want to bring up is, what's going to be really hard is, if you look at the root structure of those trees, I'm afraid if we start to go in there, you know, and the best thing to do would be to try to remove that whole root structure, but I think what's going to happen is, a lot of the irrigation's going to get ripped up with it because of the way it's, you know, the way the root structure is, and that can get costly to repair. So I'm just going to throw that out there, that's why, you know, it's, it's a double-edged sword out there, how you want to do it, so.
Megan, do you have any idea, and I don't know how many, how many boulevards, how many areas it's affected, but do you know what it would cost to, to fix this problem?
So we have four boulevards total.
Right.
Islands, center islands in our neighborhood. 19 trees planted inside of them.
Do they all have to be removed right now?
Most of them.
Okay.
All of them are, I met with an arborist that was providing.
Emily Ball from WSB.
Okay.
From the city. And she had, you know, told me that all of our boulevard trees, all 19 of them, are 75% plus dead. So yeah, I do think that, you know, they're hurting, and that was before the curb work, before, you know, their root system was really disrupted for quite a long time. And so I would say yes, that it.
All of them need to be. So there's eight, you're saying eight islands?
Four.
Four, four islands, I'm sorry.
Yep, 19 trees.
Okay.
Total.
Okay.
And the cost to have them all removed, the stumps ground out, the removal of the debris, I, I do not know. I have not looked into it, because I was coming to you guys first.
Right. Questions, council?
Is there consensus in, in the HOA of what we want done?
I do know that our, our neighborhood loves our trees. We love all of our trees, and we do work really hard, individual homeowners and the HOA, to maintain all of the beauty in our neighborhood. I can speak on behalf of every homeowner in our development of 100 homes that say they love the trees. And we do try really hard to maintain, we have for the 20-plus years, watering them and taking care of everything. So I am very positive that everybody in our neighborhood would tell you how important it is to the trees.
But it doesn't sound like you can have trees there.
I, I mean, I guess, when I met with the arborist, you know, she had just said that the wrong trees were planted there.
That's why I was asking, yeah.
Were planted too deep. And so, you know, she said that there are trees that would do better there, and, you know, she gave some options of different ones that she thinks would be more successful in that area. And so, I mean, we, we have had these trees for like 22 years now, and I know that, you know, maybe they could have been 50, 60, 70 years, like you had mentioned, but if we had the right trees in there, and they were planted properly, I would hope that we could have, you know, many years of success with them as well.
When did WSB come out and look at the trees?
Um, I don't.
I am June.
I want to say the very beginning of May, maybe?
So before the road project started?
Yes.
So they were already dead, or dying before the road project?
They were hurting before that, for sure.
And so, again, if, if we have this agreement, HOA agreement, then it would be off our, our table for the future. So let's say 20 years from now, 10 years or five years, whatever it is, if they start to die, then it's their responsibility.
Right, but the concern is, if we give them money for new trees, and then they start destroying the road, as Gary said, the road starts buckling, then it's adding to the city's cost of repairing roads, because they put new trees in, and that causes issues with the road.
And tree removal is very expensive, so are we willing to do this for every boulevard and?
Well, this is, these are ours.
They're ours.
So we're going to have to do something regardless. So, I mean, they're, they're basically our trees. So that's why I'm trying to get it off of our plate.
So if they're our trees, then we, you feel we're responsible for taking them out?
Well, we're responsible for maintaining and/or removing them, yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, so then, so then, no matter what that costs, we're going to do it?
That is correct. I think, I think the kind of impetus of this is that we would prefer there be no trees, because there's, they don't grow well there. So that, that's where we're coming from. The HOA wants trees, or something, some landscaping there. So if it was our choice as a city, we would do something that would be, you know, the trees wouldn't be replaced.
Would be removed.
They'd just be removed, they'd be removed, yeah.
What about like those big hydrangeas that are fabulous, that grow really tall?
Well, what, what I would suggest is, if they want trees, then we need to talk to the arborist to find out exactly which trees would work and not buckle the road, and, and be successful, or be the right trees. I mean, I get, I get what Kathleen is saying, we don't want to plant trees here that are going to buckle the road, or, or create problems for our infrastructure. But if we could, if we could get a list of those trees from the arborist, or even maybe limit the trees, so you could put one tree in each boulevard, plus other plantings, for instance, and still have it look attractive. Maybe coniferous trees are better, I don't know.
No, I would not put coniferous, but like you say, some of the islands are pretty, are fairly small, and they have multiple trees, so I mean, one would probably suffice. I mean, you know, I mean, there's, you know, other type, you could do, you know, Japanese lilacs, stuff like that, you know, there's, there's some ornamental trees you could put in there, it might have a smaller root structure, or whatever, too, so.
Right.
To answer your question, it was May 15th is when Megan emailed us, and then I believe she came out the end of the month, I think she was out like the end of May.
I met her on May 3rd, Wednesday, May 3rd.
Okay.
Oh, yep, I'm sorry, yes, I mean, yep, May, yep.
And one of our center islands is smaller, the one on Pondview Drive, and then there would be a three on Turtle Creek Boulevard. And I would say, in my opinion, one of them is like medium size, but the other two are pretty large. I mean, one tree planted, and those would not look appropriate.
Okay.
Yeah, like the length of like two to three houses worth of boulevards.
Hearing what you just heard, though.
Yeah.
Would you give up trees?
Would I, would I give up trees?
Yeah.
I, I can say that, I don't know if the boulevards need 19 trees in them, but I don't think that our neighborhood is willing to give up the trees.
You can't go, you won't go to bushes?
And no trees at all? I would say no.
But I think if we have some trees that are appropriate, like, like the arborist was saying, and they take on the responsibility, and it doesn't affect, and keep in mind, you know, let's say the trees are good for 20, 30 years, by that time, we have to redo the street anyway. I, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Okay.
I think the agreement has to be in place. I think that we're responsible to remove the trees, because there are trees. And then, if, if we want to give them some money from the, you know, just some money, and then we could also have the agreement state, what kind of trees can go in there, and how many. So maybe in the medium-sized ones, maybe there's two trees. Maybe in the, with, with bushes, maybe in the small ones, you know, that kind of thing. So maybe they could, once we kind of get this a little more solidified, they could come back with a plan. And then, that plan could run through the arborist, and, and then we would know if it's going to work, and how long it's going to be good, good for.
The irrigation system cost is going to be an issue.
Well, that, that might have to be on them.
Well, I'm just saying, because when we, if we could dig up and remove the trees, we're possibly, we're going to damage it to some extent, but we wouldn't replace it, or, you know, that would be on you.
Probably have to redo it anyway, because of changes in the plant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's in the contract, that while we do that, the sprinkler would be on them.
Yeah.
Because that gets expensive rapidly.
Can the removal be done in-house, or?
That would be a question for Gary.
What was that?
Gary, we do need wood, right?
Yeah, these aren't big enough, I mean, they're, I mean, what would you say?
Yeah, for our Christmas tree lighting fire.
You know, I mean, they're maybe eight to 10 inch in diameter, 10 inch, 12, maybe 12 at most. I mean, they are very, I mean, just because of where they're at, I mean, the, the growth isn't, you know, boulevard trees don't ever seem to grow as fast as something that you have in your yard, so they are a little bit smaller.
So the answer is?
Can you remember that yourself?
We can, I mean, there's no issue with cutting them down, I mean, they'll, the chipper will take anything. I mean, that'll, I mean, that's not an issue, so. Where it comes to be the problem is what's going to happen with the root system and the, and the root ball, so that's where it's going to come in, especially if they want to replant, that really has to be ground up very, you know, diligently throughout there, to make sure you get everything, so that you can have a planting area, so.
So question, do we, oh.
Do we have the equipment to do that?
We do not. We, when we grind stumps, we normally make sure we have enough trees, then we go rent one and stuff like that, we do not, saws and a, and a chipper, no problem. But we would have to go out and rent a stump grinder and stuff, so.
Or hire somebody to go in.
Or hire somebody to do it.
Do you know what it costs?
But we had the equipment that we can put the attachment on, it's just a matter of going and renting it and doing it.
Okay, so another question for you, Jasper, whoever, can we take this out of our tree fund? All of this, Public Works and this grinding and this stuff, I mean, we can.
It's tree care.
Yeah, City Council authorizes it, yeah.
Okay, all right. So what's the next step if we want to go this direction?
Yeah, so it sounds like there's an appetite from council to, to kind of do the work. I think the HOA has a desire to kind of have input on the trees, so probably have the HOA work with the arborist, to figure out what trees and what, you know, what configuration those would be planted. We'd have to come up with some costs for that, likely we wouldn't be able to do that until the earliest this fall.
Well, you wouldn't want to plant them before the fall anyway.
No.
I mean, and besides, Gary needs time, you know, because I'm assuming you're just going to fit this in whenever you can, you know, it's not like you have a lot of spare time.
Well, here's the issue, we're redoing the road.
Okay.
So now we're going to bring equipment in, and with tracks, on our brand-new road. That's, that's going to be the, depending on what we want to do with the root structure and stuff, it's, you know, I don't want to damage our new road either, so.
Right.
Late, late fall would be the time that we would probably do this, when everything gets settled down, we could take everything, they'd have time to remove plants, because there's a lot of beautiful plants in there, which I'm assuming you guys are going to want to take out, save, and replant, you know, so, unless you want to start over, I don't, you know, it's up to you guys, but.
There's not a lot in there right now, because a lot of them were taken from the grass with, on the end caps, on the end of the boulevard.
Oh, when they, for the.
The other ones are, the majority of them are in the grass.
Okay.
So, and I would say, if you're going to grind, you only need a 24-inch root ball that needs to be ground out.
Well, I got to remember, you got to do the whole root structure, though, so I mean, when we do it, we probably go out about three, four times the size of the, you know, of the actual root ball itself each way, because we grind up that whole area, because normally we're doing tree, we just did a bunch of emerald ash, and you got to get all that out of there, so you have a decent area to, to plant in again, otherwise you're going to have a heck of a time trying to get the new tree in, so.
Okay, and then, then we need an agreement in place, and so.
Yeah, yeah, so I think that we develop a plan, figure out some costs, bring it back to council, and then have a maintenance agreement that just kind of outlines who's doing what moving forward with the trees. We'd likely hand over the ownership of the boulevard trees to the HOA, make sure that the irrigation and stuff's outlined in there, and anything else, that, that the HOA is responsible for those things, moving forward after this is all done. So I'm not even sure what, I, I don't even know ballpark what the cost may be for, for something like this.
Well, we, bring back the cost estimates, and then, there may have to be a cap on it, and something like that. I mean, we're not going to just spend hundreds of thousands of dollars.
I mean, you're tired a couple days of my guys all there cutting trees and grinding, I mean, it's salary one way or the other, no matter, you know, if they're doing this or that. So it's the cost of the grinding and that stuff, you know, it's going to be, I would encourage you guys to drive through here and look at this, and, and especially look at the north side. Their next issue is going to be all the lindens that are in there that are already starting to die off. I mean, it's, it's terrifying, I mean, I'm just, you know, measuring stuff out there, you're right, the island is about 14 feet wide, and it's about 170 feet long, the longest island, so the 14 feet, it's a little bit, but it would, but like, on the shoulder itself on the north side, between the sidewalk and the curb, it's six feet. And now you're trying to plant this tree, I mean, it's, I mean, that's going to be the next thing that's going to be, the issue is going to be, all those lindens are gonna be gone. I mean, they're.
Well, and that's, that's the other reason agreement would be in place, and then that way, they know, and they can start slowly replacing those two on their own, because, you know, every year, you replace one or two, whatever, and kind of take it off of our plate. So I think, right now, the way this looks is, is more our immediate issue, but then once we get this agreement in place, then they know, in the future, that's their responsibility.
Madam Mayor, if I may, so, so what I'm, what I'm gathering is that we would do kind of a, a development-wide maintenance agreement, boulevard tree maintenance agreement, that would capture everything that's in the boulevard currently. So we would, we would do, just do the work for the islands, that's what the city's portion would be, but then moving forward, if there was any tree replant needed in the boulevards other than the islands, then that would then be defined, that that's the HOA's responsibility.
And I, I think our current HOAs are set up like that, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct, yeah. We, almost all new HOAs, we have agreements in place, and I know Sunnybrook has one, and any of them that, the islands and their common areas are being taken care of, have that. We do have a template from Kennedy and Graven that we can use for this, to draw up an agreement with them, so it's, you know, just a base, similar to what we have everywhere else, you know.
Yeah.
It's just a, just a regular boilerplate, one that we can fill in, and, and once both parties agree on what it is, we can do.
Okay.
And Allison, you said the road hasn't been paved yet?
Correct, Madam Mayor, members of council. I, well, I didn't go through this neighborhood specifically, but my understanding is the contractor will be out this week, starting to do paving throughout the project, and I think they were.
They just started today.
They were out, okay, so they were out there today. I knew Turtle Creek was going to be the first neighborhood, so they've already started.
Not on Turtle Creek.
Not on the boulevard.
They're starting, they'll work their way out.
But in, in the area, in that.
And you can, Gary, get out there in the next two days. Nothing like pressure, Gary.
You can't work after 7:00 in Minutrista.
We'll make an exception. Okay, okay, well, if you can, great, if not, we'll have to work around that. All right, any other questions?
Could I add, just real quick, sorry, I do know that, anything, you know, whatever you guys come to us, you know, with your offer, your proposal, us as board members, we do need to go back to our neighborhood and let them know, and say this is what was offered, and make sure that everybody is on the same page, so I don't like coming in and cutting down all 19 trees in the next two days would not be okay.
We have a lot on our schedule, we're going to be doing it the next two days, so.
Don't be, but I could just, as board members, we'd receive if our neighborhood saw that,
I think I'd probably get more phone calls than you.
So, we do, you know, we want to make sure that we're communicating and working with our whole neighborhood. And so, I, we need to do that as board members. And then the only other thing, I don't know if I misheard, but I just wanted to make sure and circle back. I think that someone had mentioned in the actual HOA agreement that maybe you guys would put something in there that X amount of trees are allowed to be planted.
Well, why don't we, we'll, we'll look at a plan. Okay, so, and then, again, working with the arborist, she would be able to tell all of us what would be the amount, a number of trees that would be appropriate. So, and maybe like Gary said, that one six foot boulevard, maybe there's bushes in there instead of trees. And, you know, so I think we're gonna rely on the experts that know this the best, and the arborist would be the one to do that.
Perfect.
If that's, and, and I'm assuming she would be working with you folks, you know, to get that plan down.
Sounds great.
If that's, okay. Alright, thank you very much. You have, we're good to go?
Yeah, we're good, I got good notes and.
Then we have the reconstruction project and tree discussion again.
Yes, I, I will give a synopsis, this is another, I think, an email that we received from a resident just about the, the Morning View, Westwood, Eastview neighborhood. I'll give a little synopsis about kind of the, the tree discussion and how that ebbed and flowed here. Initially, you know, we had a plan set that identified a bunch of trees that were going to be removed. The, the feedback from the neighborhood through the various meetings that we had indicated that they wanted to save as many trees as possible. So, when WSB or, you know, they were marking trees to remove, that number was drastically reduced through that process, so. And then we got to the point where we had some neighborhood meetings, and through those neighborhood meetings, we then got feedback from some of the neighbors that they wanted some additional trees added to be removed. And, and, you know, which is fine, that happens as, as things, you know, on, on these road projects, you'll see, oh, this tree doesn't look very good. It's in the right of way or close to the right of way, let's, let's get this removed. It's a lot of silver maples, ash trees, willows, those types of trees.
Cottonwoods.
Cottonwoods. So, as you can imagine, big trees. The, the, the tree contractor came through, removed all these trees. I think the resident that sent the, the email was a little bit taken aback by the feel of the neighborhood with all the trees removed, and I think that's speculating, but that's why the, the email came. The request was to, you know, possibly do some larger tree replacement. So, instead of the, I don't know, two and a half to three and a half inch trees that we typically replace with, try to replace with some larger trees, which I think everybody likely understands that that's a little bit more problematic. The trees take longer to start growing. They also have a, a lot, less of a success rate when you have a larger tree generally. So, I just want to make sure that the, the council is aware of our plan, you know, with the tree replacement, that if there was a tree removed, the, the property owner has the option to replace that tree on their property, and that gets placed there. If they choose, sometimes they choose to, sometimes they don't, so there could be potentially a net reduction in trees. But that'd be up to the, the individual property owners. Really, we want to make sure, get this in front of council, see if there's another approach, or if, if City Council's okay with the approach that we've taken. You know, I think in general, the, the residents that we met with, and I was on site for a couple of these meetings, they kind of see it as an opportunity to maybe get rid of some problematic trees, you know, there's trees that are maybe.
Like the willow trees.
Willow trees, and like even trees that are like totally encompassing power lines and things like that. To get rid of those when there's somebody there, at basically a cost of the project versus a cost to, to the homeowner. So, I just want to make sure that everybody on council understands that's kind of what happened. We, we tried to save as many trees as we could, then we got some additional feedback from individual property owners and, you know, removed some trees, and, and the neighborhood, it, it's hard to get into and drive around in, but the feel of the neighborhood right now is different than what it was before. It's less of a canopied road, but, you know, over time, the new trees will kind of grow up and, and, and bring that feel back a little bit.
Do we replace, like, if we remove a tree that they would like to have kept, do we replace it with one tree? Or do we replace it with two? I mean, how do we do that?
I would say one for one, but, I mean, a lot of the trees that we are taking out, you know, were all, I mean, few of them were already dying and dead, you know, so like that, and then, when you're requested to have a tree removed, I don't know if it's the city's responsibility to try to replace that one.
No.
You know, so, I mean, but, you know, in a yard, I mean, if you have one that was gonna be, I would say one for one, probably, but, you know, it's, that's your call, so.
Well, I mean, I think the one to one makes sense, and I mean, well, the resident who emailed us isn't happy about it. There may be other people that are happy that there's more sunlight in the neighborhood. And I, I don't think we can do individual, like, you know, oh, you get two, because you want two, and you don't, you know, like, it's, it's a one for one. And obviously, not everyone's gonna be happy, but again, the trees will grow and there will be a new canopy and.
And we did save other trees, I mean, we did, you know, go through the project, we met with homeowners even on the fire lane, shifted over drainage so we could save, of all things, the cottonwood, but that's what their request, so we, we shifted stuff around. We, you know, did do that and stuff, but a lot of these trees, too, remember, are in the right of way. So, I mean, that, you know, and, you know, few of them were on our property itself that we owned a chunk in there, so. We really didn't do anything different than any other city would have done during a project, so.
Allison?
Madam Mayor, if I may, add to the conversation. So, when we look at tree replacement too, in these older established neighborhoods, there have been trees that have had the opportunity to have fifty-plus years to grow. And sometimes, and I'm no tree expert, but certainly you need to give trees space to grow. And so, when we look at replacement, we do want to be cognizant of the full maturity of these trees. And so, to go, and let's say, as an example, let's say there were three trees removed on a property in the neighborhood. Well, quite, quite frankly, there might not be enough space at full maturity to put three trees back in. And so, in, in the, in the project quantities, when we bid this out, we did include a, a token quantity of, of twenty deciduous and twenty coniferous trees to be used, as, as Mr. Peters indicated, is, you know, on a case by case basis where it made sense to do some tree replacement. A lot of times, unfortunately, these trees grow right where the water service is. That certainly isn't where we would want to put a replacement tree. So, there are options available through there, but I think when we, when we go and say, you know, tree for tree replacement, there are a few caveats and considerations that should be taken into account.
Yeah, okay. So, it's basically a lot by lot, I mean, that you're gonna have to make that decision, and, yeah. And then another question, will this, the tree replacements also be able to be taken out of our tree fund versus our road fund?
I would assume you can do that, again, it's just how much money you want to rob out of it right away, I mean, it's.
The road.
The, the project fund.
The project fund would be better to do it than that, I mean.
I'm thinking then we'd have more money for future road projects, that's all.
I was wondering, should we replace all the other trees we need to replace?
Madam Mayor, if I may, just to give council some context on how much these trees, so, we bid out for forty trees in the total. For those forty trees is seventeen thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars, so.
Okay.
That's, that's just for whatever that's worth in the conversation.
Okay. Yeah, I would say, do what you're doing, you know.
And when we give them the trees, we're gonna give them to them in their yard out of the right of way.
Yes.
We don't want anything to do with them anymore.
Right.
I mean, it, um, to establish trees, to put trees in the right of way, it just does not make sense.
Okay.
Just give them to the, give them to the name, give them to their homeowner, they're yours, here you go. Let them nurture them, take care of them, and then it's on their dime.
Okay. Alright.
Very good, so we'll just continue the way we have. Just wanted to make sure everybody's aware, since it was an email that all of, all of us got.
Sounds good, and it was trees again.
Trees.
Alright, with that, anything else? I, I think we're done. So, is there a motion to adjourn?
So much.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Peter, all those in favor signify with a aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes, and we will reconvene at seven o'clock, so you have a nice, long break.